Thank you, Amy. Okay, best and brightest.
Oh, where is Ms. Powers? Ms. Powers? Okay, go.
Really?
Really?
Okay, well, in, um, we know in 2016, best and brightest started, however, in 2017, it was amended with the House Bill 7069. They added basically two sections, Sections 45 and 46, and attached to the agenda, I kind of broke it down, you know, took it from the statute and broke it down so that it was more understandable, so as much as possible. And for the most part, what we really need to know is, a lot of it didn't change for this upcoming up school year. Okay, however, the major changes, though, that are there is classroom teachers may receive scholarships in the following amounts, okay? One, if a teacher has, or instructional staff member has a highly effective rating the previous year. Okay, so right now, we're going into 1718. So in 1617, if they receive an overall highly effective rating, they're automatically going to be receiving $1,200. Does not matter whether SAT, ACT, nothing like that. It's just purely going to be based on that one component. If they receive a highly effective overall rating the previous year, they will be awarded $1,200.
Is that, the only thing that wasn't clear during the legislation is, will they get that if there's money left over after the other?
They're getting the $1,200. However, if they receive an E effective the previous year, they get up to $800.
Ah, that's cool.
So that is where it's going to be based on the funds that are available. So if the number of eligible teachers exceeds that total allocation, the DOE will, or the department will prorate that per those teachers that received the overall E effect of the previous year. Okay, so that is something new there. So those two pieces, like I said, is new. The piece that is not going to change is the teachers that are applying for the best and brightest larger amount. In the past, it was always up to 10,000. Now, it is a $6,000 fixed amount. So if you qualify, meeting the same eligibility requirements that we had last year, and that's the one where if they received a highly effective the year before, or if they're a brand-new teacher, okay? They don't have any rating. They are, they fit that classroom teacher definition, and they scored in the 80th percentile on either their SAT or their ACT test. If they met those qualifications, they apply, they meet the deadlines, and they submit to our district. We then submit them to the state, and they would receive $6,000. So, like I said, that process of applying and all that, and what the qualifications are, are the same as last year. The only difference this year is, is that it's going to be a $6,000 amount, not up to 10,000.
It's not stacking, right?
No, you could actually receive the $1,200 because you received a highly effective the year before.
What is that?
Correct. And the $6,000. So if you are, if you're a brand-new teacher, you would just qualify for the $6,000. However, if you are a returning teacher that has received best and brightest before, well, in order to qualify for the $6,000, you have to have the highly effective the year before as well. So yes, that would be a $7,200. Now, that's, so that's the Section 45 piece. And that is for according to statute, that's for this coming up year, 2018-19 and 2019-20. So for the next three years, that is the way that they are saying that it's going to be. However, starting in 2020, is where they started saying that they're going to make some changes regarding adding some other tests where it's not just going to be based on SAT or ACT. They could use the GRE, they could use the LSAT, they could use a GMAT, MCATs, they could use other tests besides just the SAT or ACT. Also, starting in 20-
What year?
2020, '21. 2020, yeah. That's the year. Long time. So things could change. But that is what the statute says right now, is starting that school year, those other tests will be included. Also, starting that school year, the qualification of being in, scoring in the 80th percentile will change to only scoring in the 77th percentile instead of the 80th. And also, if the teacher graduated cum laude or higher with their bachelor's degree, they would actually only need to be in the 71st percentile on their test. So lots of different, when that happens, if and when that happens, there's going to be a lot more of interpreting scores and so forth from our department when people are applying. But those are things that they are setting forth in 2020 according to statute. But like I said, until then, we are doing what we've done before. Section 46 was an additional piece that they added where it's allowing school principals to receive the scholarship if they meet the criteria. And the criteria for the school principals, and it's not for assistant principals, it's only for school principals, would be that they've served as a school principal at his or her school for at least two consecutive years, including that current school year. And then the other qualification is that he or she's, his or her school has a ratio of best and brightest teachers to other classroom teachers that is at the 80th percentile or higher for schools within that same grade group. So basically, if, it's going to be the teachers at their school, how many of them are best and brightest? And it'll be a ratio, and elementary compared to elementary, middle compared to middle, high compared to high, and if it's in the 80th percentile. So how that's going to work is, when we submit all of our names in December to the state of all the teachers that apply for best and brightest and qualify, we are going to need also include, next to them, their school names and their principals' names. So that will then get submitted to the state. The state then is going to compile that altogether, and they will then notify us if any of our principals work at schools that have a ratio of teachers that is in the 80th percentile based on their grade group.
So not that they are highly effective?
Nope. It's just the amount of teachers that are-
Just if they happen to have gotten, if the teachers they hired happened to have good test scores when they were in high school.
Correct. They qualify for the best and brightest. Yes?
Was that an oversight, did we ever find out, was that actually an oversight on the principal thing? Was it panics that they just wrote principals in? And so wouldn't include assistant principals? What was the, what did they find out?
No, they, that was very clear.
They deliberately left them out. That's right.
Then what was the reasoning for that?
Oh, I don't know if there was a reason for it. I mean, I don't know if they provided, they provided a reason for it. I mean, maybe it'd be a less amount of money than being able to be provided to them if you then included more, possibly. I'm not sure. I'm saying that wasn't ever explained.
So again, though, a principal just gets this for hiring people?
Correctly.
So, I mean, so can we just ask for that then on the application?
I think so.
You know, we're talking about being right now, you know, your guidance counselors are left out of this, your nurses are left out of this.
Speech.
It's not just-
A lot of people are left out.
A lot of them are left out.
All of our district instructional staff, all of them, yeah. And the amount that they will receive is if the principal works for a Title I school, it would be, they would receive $5,000. If they work for a, not a Title I school, they receive $4,000.
And if they get a host, they get $200,000.
That's just the amount the statute says. Yeah, it didn't give explanations of it. This is purely just how, we read the statute, and we just, you know, put it more in a bulleted format and separating it out so that we could understand it. The next piece behind that in the agenda is, or behind the agenda, is the eligibility for that $6,000 piece, just reminding you of what our, you know, our steps and our process is for our district. And the board approved this last year. If you remember, we actually approved it at the beginning and then we amended it a few times. But for the most part, it's just we took what the statute says, and the amendments we did make throughout the year were basically to allow more teachers to qualify with what we were allowed to play with. I mean, there was most of this we can't do anything about, but the pieces that we did have leeway or leniency that we had ability to change, we did to benefit the teachers.
Mr. Walker, did we ever get a final number? Because the number kept kind of fluctuating as to how much the state allocated for this. It seemed to went anywhere from like $180 to $200 and something that's a number.
For the new best and brightest?
For the new best and brightest.
I do not know what the-
But I, I mean, because if they're saying the only one that's up to is the other, conceivably, and I sure hope this happens, that, that they end up having to pay more as a result of that we have a ton of highly effective teachers, and that between that and the changes in the best and brightest, that they would exceed.
That would probably do away with the $800.
Oh, well, that I don't want to happen.
The law says up to $800. As long as money exists. So if the money ran out at the first level, there's a lot of teachers, there would be nothing.
And I don't know if they, when they actually looked at this, it's my understanding that they did not entirely correlate the number of E and HEs and the dollar amounts that they set aside. So they don't know. If they have no-
They still don't know how many HEs and Es we have for our last year. Our, we haven't gotten our data sources to the principals yet because we're still waiting on VAM ratings. So we do not know for 1617 what our overall ratings are yet.
And let's not forget that now, we're going to give the tests later, and we're supposed to get all of that data back sooner.
I hate to interrupt you, Mr. Kennedy, but we've got to recess-
Yes, ma'am.
-the workshop and open up a public hearing on the tentative budget.
Turn my headphones to-
I'm calling a meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the tentative millage rate and tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. This is an advertised public hearing. Public notice of this hearing appeared in the Citrus County Chronicle on July 22, 2017. The tentative millage rate for required local effort is 4.333 mils, which includes .0020 mils for the prior period of adjustment, and is a decrease of the 3.98% over the rolled-back rate. The tentative millage rate for discretionary is 2.248 mils, which includes capital outlay. The total tentative millage rate is 6.581 mils, and is a decrease of 1.50% over the roll-back rate. The tentative budget totals $216,371,137. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board as to the millage level or any item within the budget? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.333 mils, which includes a .002 mils for the prior period adjustment for operating purposes?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.333 mils for operating purposes.
Mr. Dodd moved, and Ms. Powers seconded the motion to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 4.333 mils for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye? 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 Is there a motion to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate of .78 mils for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate of .748 mils for operating purposes.
Mr. Kennedy moved, and Ms. Count seconded the motion to adopt the tentative local discretionary millage rate of .748 mils for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, again, the motion passed 5 to 0. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.50 mils for capital outlay purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative millage rate for 1.5 mils for capital outlay purposes. I'll set up my microphone.
Ms. Counts moved, and Mr. Dodd seconded the motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.50 mils for capital outlay purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. These millage rates represent a total millage rate of 6.581 mils. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate?
I move to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Second motion?
Ms. Powers moved, and Ms. Count seconded the motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate. Mister?
Second.
Who's going to read the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that you, Mr. Walker?
Mr. Walker.
Resolution, the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative millage rates for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapters 200 and 1011, Florida statutes approved tentative millage rates for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. And whereas, at the public hearing in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates in the amounts of required local effort, tentative millage levy 4.333 mils, proposed amount to be raised $39,443,984. Basic discretionary, .748 mils, proposed amount to be raised $68,9162. And capital outlay, tentative millage levy 1.50 mils, proposed amount to be raised $13,654,737. Total millage rate to be levied is less than the roll-back rate by 1.5%. Now therefore be it resolved that the Citrus County, the School Board of Citrus County adopted each tentative millage rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, on July 25, 2017, by separate vote prior to adopting the tentative budget.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to, and the motion passed. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2017-2018 fiscal year in the amount of $216,371,137?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2017-2018 fiscal year in the amount of $216,371,137.
Second motion?
Mr. Dodd moved, and Mr. Kennedy seconded the motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2017-2018 fiscal year in the amount of $216,371,137. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2017-2018 fiscal year?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2017-2018 fiscal year.
My second motion?
Ms. Powers moved, and Ms. Count seconded the motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget for the Citrus County School Board for the 2017-2018 fiscal school year.
The resolution, the resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapters 200 and 1011 Florida statutes, approved tentative millage rates and a tentative budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. And whereas, the School Board of Citrus County set forth appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018. And whereas, at the public hearing in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates and the budget in the amount of $216,371,137 for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Now therefore be it resolved that the attached budget the School Board of Citrus County including the millage rates has set forth therein is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County's tentative budget for the categories indicated for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted?
I move to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted.
Second.
Mr. Kennedy moved, and Mr. Dodd seconded the motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. A final budget hearing is scheduled for Monday, September 11, 2017, at 5:30 PM at the Citrus County School Board District Services Center located at 1007 West Main Street on State Route 44, Inverness, Florida.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. All right, all right, Amy, we're back. I'll open, reopen the workshop. Sorry, I had to scoot you out. You were doing such a great job.
I did, I did find out that I did, that I looked up online to see what was the fiscal responsibility that said with the expansion of best and brightest, that bill conforms to the proposed House bill and so forth, which includes $200 million in additional funds for the best and brightest teacher and principal scholarship program. $200 million.
I'm just going to stay quiet.
I'll have to stay quiet, too.
Any questions regarding our process and?
Thanks for doing it for the teachers. And I'm grateful for any of the teachers who gave them that.
Yes, teachers actually received all of the information they needed. We sent it actually mid-July at first, but everything probably more than they needed. But the thing is that if we have teachers that possibly want to take the SAT or ACT, there is one coming up, and the deadline for that one to register was in July. So we wanted teachers to at least have the information beforehand. So we did provide them this information so that if they did want to register, they would meet that deadline. However, we did, when we sent that out, receive a lot of replies back of, you know, their mailboxes were full, a lot of teachers. So we will be resending out all this information after they return at the beginning of August, after a week or so after they turn to those that did not receive it or are receiving it, of course, again.
Very nice. Thank you, Amy. Okay, 2017-2018 student progression plan?
Ms. Stanley will be here to address any questions or concerns the board might have about any of the changes or information in the people's progression plan. Mr. Rollin and Mr. Edger are on the training.
Good afternoon.
I thought they were out hiring new teachers.
Yeah, no.
It's my pleasure to address the School Board, Mr. Semmel, Mr. Rollin, and School Board members. If anyone has any questions beforehand, and Mr. Rollin went through quite extensively the last time he was here.
Yes, he did.
And I just was wondering if you have any other additional questions? I would be happy to answer them for you.
Forward.
We're covering, we're covering the base on the sunscreen change, right?
Yes, sir. We're happy about that.
And, you know, she's not here right now, but, Mr. Rollin, maybe you can, there's been questions as to whether chapstick qualifies as sunscreen or not based on whether it has certain chemicals in it or not. So are we okay with chapstick? Because I know that I actually get that question.
Yeah.
Okay. I figured, but I thought it wouldn't hurt.
We, we have, we try to take a common sense approach.
I know we have. And I'm so appreciative of this district.
Common sense is still uncommon. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Pause your view?
Dixon.
Mr. Dixon. And Dr. Gessis, absolutely.
I'm the silent partner.
We're glad you weren't silent earlier.
In 24 parts?
Yes, I think I'll do one big. This could have been done as one policy, but we chose to break it into individual parts because this is a result of an FDLE audit, which is a standard audit that's being conducted around the state, and Pasco County's going through the same thing. And basically, the purpose of the technical audit was to ensure that the agency is operating in compliance with the agency's non-criminal justice user agreement with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and version 5.5 of the Federal Bureau of Investigation Criminal Justice Information Services Security Policy. The audit revealed that the agency is operating in compliance with the non-criminal justice user agreement. However, they did identify 12 areas of concern that must be addressed to prevent future areas of non-compliance with the criminal justice security policy. And they provided to the district templates for specific things that they wanted to see in the policy. And the process, we took those templates, we organized them in the fashion that we use in our policy manual, and we changed the language to reflect, you know, the standard operating procedure. I met with Dr. Gessis, and we went through every policy word for word, and he was very good at finding things that needed to be tweaked, and we tweaked the language. Then we met with Suzie and her staff, and went through every policy word for word. There had been some changes since they were distributed to you, because I got feedback from Mr. Bradshaw and from the Policy Review Committee. And briefly, I'll just touch on those changes, and then we'll open it up for any questions. The first one is 8.801, there were no changes. The second one is 8.802, account management changes under procedure. Mr. Bradshaw wanted to add the language, "The district local agency security officer, LASSO, shall be the Director of Human Resources or their designated as a point of contact." "The LASSO shall manage information system accounts to include establishing, activating, modifying, reviewing, disabling, and removing user agreements on all criminal justice information systems."
Mr. Dixon, real quick, are you, have you already gone past the first one, or are we coming back to these if we have questions?
You want me to go back to the first one?
Well, I know, I'm just, yeah, I have a question about the first one, but I didn't know if you were just going over the changes first and then come back to them, or?
We can, why don't I go through all the changes, and then we'll come back to them? Because Dr. Gessis is here, he may have specific things that he wants to address. And that concludes the change to 8.802, account management. And that concludes the, the change to 8.802, account management. 8.803, same language was added under procedures to specify who the LASO is. 8.804, authenticator management added under procedures, "The district local agency security officer shall be the director of human resources or their designated as a point of contact." And then under 8.805, we don't want to add any policy language on Bluetooth technologies because we don't utilize that as part of the security policy, so we just want to reserve a section in the policy manual in the event we want to use that at a later date. 8.806, no changes. 8.807, under scope, we just deleted the word "system" because it was used twice and added the same language about the local agency security officer under procedures. 8.808, incident response, including mobile devices, we added the language about the local agency security officer under procedures. 8.809, no changes. 8.810, there were no changes. 8.811, there were no changes. 8.812, there were no changes. 8.813, no changes. No changes on 8.814 or 8.815 or 8.816. 8.817, we just added a word under procedures, it was missing in the first sentence, "The district utilizes wireless access for the ability to access the district information And then under 8.818, security alerts and advisories, we capitalized the word department after IT when it referred to the single department. 8.819, there were no changes. 8.820, we added, reworded the last, first sentence in the last paragraph to state, "To ensure the secure environment, the VOIP system, the district will ensure that the underlying data network is configured to host efficient bandwidth and reliability." There were just some missing words. In a summary of universal changes that were made, we changed the word "agency" to "district" except for "local agency security officer." And we explain in each policy that the local agency security officer position will be the director of HR, designated. We changed staff and member to be personnel, to be consistent with other parts of the various policies in the policy manual. And that concludes the changes that were made between the time that the Policy Enforcement Committee and Mr. Bradshaw reviewed it and when you received it. Now if you want to go back and ask any specific questions.
I've got a couple.
Mr. Dodd?
The local agency security officer is the HR director slash designated. Who gets the option to appoint the designated? Superintendent? Or can the HR director appoint its own, or in our case, her own designated?
Well, it's Teresa Royal in our district, but because Mr. Bradshaw felt like that position may not be universal, that it, we may not always have a compliance officer, that it would be the director of HR, the director of HR would either do it or appoint a department member to assume that responsibility.
So that's not a board appointment to the designated, that's the HR director's appointment?
Yes.
And the HR director's reports to the superintendent as operations?
But the LASO is the one who issues the password, the account setup password, correct?
Yes, I mean, she's responsible for the task of making sure these policies are carried out.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that because it says in the policy of 8.803, and I guess you said you were going to change "agency" to "district," you said, right?
Yes, correct.
So on 8.803, down at the bottom, I guess that should say "district local agency security officer?"
Yes, that was a change. It said, "The district local agency, agency security officer, LASO, shall be the director of human resources or their designated, will be the point of contact for all accounts. The LASO will ensure each account is set up with a temporary password. When the user initiates a first-time log-on, the temporary password will be entered and the user will be prompted to create a new password."
Okay. And then on the first one, 8.801, on the disposal, so we're actually going to have to, they want them destroyed by drilling or smashing?
That is correct. And he was very specific with that in the audit, that we had to destroy in that, in that fashion. And it had to be, it was very specific.
Let me just provide a little context. We are not a law enforcement agency. And so they have these real discreet, specific guidelines for data related to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and agencies use that information. To be honest, there's no way we could comply with those guidelines with our 9,000-plus computers. No words, drill every hard drive, you know, there's, there's a lot of things we just couldn't afford to do, couldn't ever do. They actually want you to observe physically, eye to eye, the destruction of that drive. We just couldn't do that. So what we did with the assistance and guidance from FDLE, we actually, I mean, they had a workaround that they're happy with. We separated that FDLE computer off of our network onto its own network. And so the things that you're reading, when you talk about passwords need to be changed, that one example you just read, that relates to that Florida Department of Law Enforcement computer. Destruction of that hard drive relates to that, that one computer. So, yeah, there's some unique-
And not to the 9,000 other ones we have.
No, ma'am. So you'll find some kind of unique requirements there, but we've localized that to that ones or two systems that use that information.
Do you have to drill? Does Teresa get to actually be involved? Is she a drill?
I'm good at it.
The other question I had related to the mobile devices, are, do we have anybody obtaining the information on mobile device? I mean, I, I don't know what the definition-
It is only obtained through that one computer, it is not obtained through phones, cell phones or any of that.
But this policy is there in case we do.
Yes.
Correct.
So FDLE wanted us to have a policy on mobile devices even though we don't use mobile devices.
Correct, we do not. We just use that one computer.
We don't use Bluetooth at all, so that's just completely left and reserved.
Yep.
Yeah.
So you'd hate to call Susie and say, "We got to drill your cellphone."
That'd be a rough thing, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Bomber's going again.
Any more questions?
And I just would like to say personally, thank you to Chuck and to Dr. G because when they did the audit, Teresa and Steve and I were like, we hadn't given a wordly idea. And thank goodness Dr. G knew what they were talking about and, and his gentleman and could understand. And thanks Chuck, to Chuck, because we went through, when Chuck said we went through every one of these, we spent hours going through. So we appreciate all those points.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Thought you'd get us invented the internet.
Does anyone have anything else? If not, we're adjourned.